Okay, we're ready to go. Okay.
Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 10th Montgomery County Commission Meeting. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television DATV and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. Okay, first up, we have the county engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen on the online. We have four resolutions today. The first is Resolution 20-1430 to authorize an agreement with Brumbach Construction, Inc. for the Chicken Whistle Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in Jackson Township at their lowest and best bid of $298,529 through May 6th of 2022. 1431 is to release 100% of the letter of credit in the amount of $622 and one cent and accept the cash sidewalk bond in the amount of $21,201.85 for the Bridle Creek Ranch Section 2 in Washington Township. And we have two amendments to agreements. The first is 1432 with Brumbach Construction, Inc. for the Diamond Mill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in the city of Germantown, by adding $6,692.50 to the original amount for a total of $808,218.50 due to a change order. And 1433 is with Eagle Bridge Company for the Kiwi Street Bridge Replacement Project in the city of Dayton and Harrison Township by extending the date through December 31st of 2021. Of course, this project's been mostly complete for quite a while, but doing all the final paperwork with ODOT with various funding sources takes a while.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Juvenile Court?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Juvenile Court, we have Resolution 1435, authorizing an agreement with Goodwill Easter Seals in Miami Valley to provide peer recovery services for juvenile treatment court participants in an amount not to exceed $29,710 through September 30th, 2021.
I move for approval.
Second.
Excuse me. All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Michael, I think you'll need to say that we're going to pull the sheriff one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Em. Under the county sheriff, we are going to pull Commissioners Resolution 20-1434.
Okay.
Do they need to vote on it, Em?
No, just so it's on there.
Okay, thank you.
Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab?
Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have to accept grants from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Resolution 1436, the FY 2020 DNA Capacity Enhancement for Backlog Reduction Program in an amount of $292,263. And we have Resolution 1437, the FY 2020 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant Program in an amount of $102,22.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Coroner?
Under the county coroner, we have Resolution 1438, accept a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the FY 2020, strengthening the Medical Examiner Coroner System Program, Purpose Area 1, Forensic Pathology Fellowships in an amount of $125,000.
I need for approval.
For Em, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, County Administrator?
Under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on November 3rd, 2020. Resolution 1439, Approval of Bills. That list is available in the clerk's office.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services, Tyler?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have just a few resolutions for your consideration today. The first is 1440. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 1441, authorize an agreement with Dayton Access Television, also known as DATV, to provide services related to video recording of the Board of County Commissioners' public meetings in an amount not to exceed $5,000 through December 31st of 2024. 1442 authorizes a consulting agreement with the Green County Sheriff's Office for access to the Justice Web Reports Module with a revenue not to exceed $500 through December 31st of 2021. 1443 authorize a request for information for the transition of the Justice Web Reports Module. 1444, we would like to pull today. In the final two resolutions, authorized purchases. The first is with, the first is 1445 with Becker Construction Incorporated to upgrade the jail lobby by relocating the bail bond office to provide space for 10 visitation kiosk to help reduce the spread of COVID-19 in the amount of $73,500. And last is 1446 with Motorola Solutions Incorporated to remove existing equipment, reconfigure furniture, and install cable and power systems for the jail at a cost to, not to exceed $65,949.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Environmental Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Resolution 1447 authorize a payment by warrant to American Train Co. LLC in the amount of $1,195. Resolution 1448 authorize an agreement with Double J Construction, Inc. for construction of the Maple Crest Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $289,938 through August 7th, 2021. Commissioners, this resolution, this agreement gets us one step closer to resolving the sanitary issues for those Maple Crest residents. We got Resolution 1449 to accept an easement deed from Brad A. and Cecil A. Chalker for sewer lines in connection with the Terrace Village sanitary sewer improvements and authorize the auditor to issue a warrant in the amount of $3,000, following tour to amend agreements by extending the terms through December 31st, 2021. Resolution 1450, Blackton Beach Corporation for the construction of the sanitary conveyance and treatment Western Regional Project. Resolution 1451, Hazen and Sawyer for consulting services for construction of the Vertical Asset Management Program. Last two, the last two, I'm sorry, are to release 100% of performance bonds and subdividers contracts. Resolution 1452, Wicker Plumbing for the Wicker Plumbing Development, and Resolution 1453, M.I. Homes of Cincinnati LLC for the Windstone Section 3 Development.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
OMB, John?
Good afternoon. We have four budget amendments for your consideration. 1454 to authorize appropriation amendments. 1455 to authorize additional appropriations. 1456 to authorize cash transfers. And 1457 authorize appropriation decreases.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Human Services, Tom?
Thank you. I have one item this afternoon under Human Services Planning and Development. Resolution 1458 will authorize an agreement with multiple agencies for systems of care, family-centered services and supports for children and families in an amount not to exceed $86,935 through June 30th of 2021.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Business Services? Chris?
Afternoon, Commissioners. I have two resolutions and two late items for you. First one under Workforces, 1459, authorizing work experience and guidance program agreements, Group A with various local businesses through December 31st, 2021. 1460 authorizes work experience and guidance program agreements, Group B, with various local businesses through December 31st, 2021. And for late items, 1461, we have authorizing CARES nonprofit grant agreements with various local organizations through December 30th, 2020. And 1462, amending Resolution 200936, which created the education grant program through the Office of CARES Act to exclude a requirement and change the grant amount range for qualifying educational institutions.
Move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, comments by County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. You know, we recently had an opportunity to kick off our new Employment and Opportunity Center in West Town. And Commissioners, this center is going to be just really dynamic for the Northwest Dayton Corridor, for Drexel, for Jefferson Township, really all the way out to New Lebanon. I was out in New Lebanon visiting, and they're excited because they can just shoot straight down Third Street. So, we had that event. And then, as the holidays are approaching and COVID-19 pandemic continues to impact people and the stress of financial uncertainty, we still also have some CARES Act programs that are still available, especially in the areas of utilities. So I thought, Commissioners, you would want to talk about both the Employment Opportunity Center and some of the programs that are still moving through CARES Act for the pandemic.
Well, I'm happy to start. You know, we were, we were all out at West Town. And to a person, everybody from the community, the neighborhood, are just thrilled about what we're doing out there. We're going to change lives there. People are going to find great employment there, careers there. We're going to help young people there. And so it's, it's going to be a nice beacon for that area. And then couple that with what's happening over at Omega. You know, it's, we're, you know, the model of being at one place is, is great. But as we've learned, you know, we do need to be in that community. So I'm really excited about the next steps up there. Michael, I know we signed the lease, but how long do you think it'll be before we can actually open it?
We're looking at probably the spring of next year.
Okay.
Floor plan is, is already moving. And so, the spring of next year, we should, we should be ready for ribbon cutting, and it should be an exciting time for the whole community. This, the center is going to be state-of-the-art. And as you mentioned, Commissioner, and as you all have said before, we've got to go where the people are. So, thank you again for your support in moving this forward and also in helping us bring in some state money to make this happen. So, thank you.
The other thing I, I just want to add is, in case anybody missed it, there was an election last week, and nobody laughed. Okay, I'll try not to be funny. So, I know no one missed it, but what, what people did miss was Ohio being one of the states that wasn't right, that wasn't able to come up with the numbers. And that's one thing we, we've done right in Ohio. The way that we do our ballots, it's not perfect. We, we know that, but and I, and I just think Montgomery County, our Board of Elections, is one of the best in the country. I mean, we know that. We, we saw thousands and thousands of people that came through the three weeks prior. We had very little glitches day of the election. There were things that happened, of course. There always, always are. Judy and I could, could send some affidavits about the things we witnessed alone that day out in our parking lot, people being told at the poll to go downtown and vote. Well, there was no place to vote downtown, so, things like that. And so, I think people just need to realize that things happen every day. There, there are mistakes that, human mistakes. There was no mistakes with our system here. And, and so I, I think Ohio can be very proud of that.
Commissioner, I just, if I could add to that, that is a team effort. When you think of elections, the work that, you know, Jan and Steve do, the facilities team, the safety and the risk team, and it really is, the whole county team, to your point, comes together to make the election. And it, and you're right, it lasts for months. I mean, we start planning for this months before the election. So, again, thank you, but I think Steve and Jan did a great job. Our facilities team, they, they supported it, our safety team. So, thank you for anyone who was involved in making the election a success.
Well, yeah, and add to that, you know, COVID, the way that our facilities team worked with Board of Elections, you know, made sure everything was done. I mean, we spent a lot of time out there at the early vote, and to see our team working so hard, I, I didn't want to leave them out, Michael. I'm glad you said that, because while the Board of Elections did what they had to do, we had to get the building ready and safe and clean. And so, our team just did a fabulous job. Good job.
I, I would also say that it was my pleasure to actually receive comments and notifications from people, not people I necessarily know, but, you know, calling us to compliment. And so that goes a long way. You often hear about the complaints, but you don't always hear as much about the compliments. And, you know, they wanted to vote in person, and they just wanted to make sure that, that I knew that it was, it went relatively fast, despite the crowds, and they felt very safe and just thought, you know, it was pleasant. There was no problem. So, I didn't get just one, I got numerous of those. So I think that in itself gives you an idea of how well the community received, how it was handled. So, I join in.
Yep, they all did a great job. Commissioner Lieberman and I, we witnessed it for several days, several weeks. And people would leave smiling, and they weren't complaining. They were so happy that they were able to vote early. There was never a problem. Staff and volunteers were friendly. And I just think it just was great. And every time I see anyone that works at the Board of Elections, I always thank them for, you know, for the great job that they did. So, and we are, our, our office also got several calls from people. In fact, one gentleman from Florida called to say that his daughter voted in Florida, and it was a nightmare. Nothing against Florida, Debbie. And then, he voted earlier that day and said, oh my gosh, it was just great. It was not a problem at all. So, you know, again, I'm very proud of how well we've come out of that. So, thank you.
Well, I will also just add in that, you know, we're talking about how people have been hit hard. But I wanted to talk, next week is Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. And so, just want, it's from November 15th to the 21st. And, you know, it's one thing to think about it, know it in your head. It's another thing to experience it. And so there's an opportunity for all of us to become more aware. And we are presenting a 44-day challenge starting next week. And, you know, I have to admit, I said, why 44 days? You know, that's a unique number. And because last year, 44 days was the average length of time that households, households were in Montgomery County shelters. So, to think about, you know, individuals, families being in a shelter for 44 days. So, the 44-day challenge will help us learn more about the issues of homelessness and housing insecurity and where those issues intersect. So, if anyone listening wants to get involved and educate yourself and your family, you can email our Human Services Planning and Development Team And you can join us in becoming more aware and hopefully getting energized around this big issue. And I know, Judy, you've, you've spent more than a decade on, on hunger issues and made progress. And then this darn pandemic has kind of put everybody back on their heels again. So, this is a huge issue, and I think it's kind of interesting. So be, I invite the community to join us in making ourselves more aware.
Good, thank you, thank you. Well, one last.
Okay, go ahead, Judy, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go. I was just going to say, hung with awareness. I don't think they're doing it this year because of, probably because of COVID. But several years ago, they challenged many of us elected officials to spend the night outside, outside of, over Apple Street. Not in tents, you know, in, in makeshift, you could bring a sleeping bag. Unfortunately, it wasn't a very cold night, but it was, it was the same week, Homeless Awareness Week. And I'll never forget that, as long as I live, having to sleep outside like that. Fortunately, it did start raining a little bit, and there was a picnic table. I called under the picnic table at the same time Representative Strayhorn did, and I had to fight him over the picnic table, but we figured it out. So, but it is, you know, awareness, stuff we take for granted, right? I mean, we do, we take it for granted. And it's, it's something I think is really important. So, thank you. I'm sure we'll be able to put some of that on our social media, send some things out, awareness points and, and things to think about as we're entering the season of Thanksgiving.
I'm pretty sure there's an event or two next week. Focus to it, too. Okay. Well, the grants for the CARES Act program, obviously, most of them are basically ended. And, but there's still one that's available, and that would be for utilities grants. And that's with DPNL and Vectrum. So unfortunately, you only have until this Friday. Is that right, Michael?
Yes.
Yes, this Friday, yes. I wanted to be absolutely sure that you still have time to get in for assistance, DPNL and Vectrum. So, that's just through this Friday, and that would be November?
13th.
The 13th. Ooh, Friday the 13th, okay.
Well, I, can I just add one thing, though? Even though our CARES Act, most of our programs have ended or are about to, you know, the final one end, through Miami Valley Community Action Partnership, anyone who's still seeking rental assistance, that is not, it, there's the Ohio CARES Act money. And so, I don't want anyone to think that there, there's not an opportunity. The need is still great. So if you know of anyone, you know, go to their website, I think it's mbcap.org. But if you Google Miami Valley Community Action Partnership, you'll get it. And it's right on the front page with all of the specifics. And you can do it online, and you have to require documentation. So I don't want anybody that, that's in need to think, even though ours has been exhausted, that there still isn't more hope and help.
Good, okay, thank you. Okay, our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, November 17th. I hate to say this, November is just flying by, flying by. So, everybody please wear your mask and social distance. So, we'll see you Tuesday, November 17th. And as soon as we adjourn, then we're going to have a viewing.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Look at all those directors just getting right out of here.
Of course they are.
They don't know what they're missing.
I agree.
Absolutely not. This is the best part, right?
Yep.
Are we ready?
Always.
Well, I am.
So, we have, we have the viewing for the Mad River Road, Alex Bell Road Intersection Improvement Project in Washington Township. This is the long-awaited roundabout project.
Yeah.
Moving along, and Rex Dickie's our project manager, he'll tell you all about it.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners, Administrator, and everybody who's joining in today for the viewing. Emily, is this where I share the screen?
Yes, you can go ahead.
There we go.
There it is.
As you said, today is the viewing for the project to improve the intersection, Mad River Road and Alex Bell Road. The hearing on this project will be next week on November 17th. We said, here's the intersection. Mad River Road is a major collector from David Road to 725. And Alex Bell Road is a minor arterial that runs east-west and connects a lot of communities. And you can see at this intersection, you've also got Munger Road coming into Mad River, Yankee Street coming into Mad River, very close to the intersection and very close to each other, which creates problems. Just take a aerial view here, right at the intersection. You can see Creekview Estates condominiums here on the southwest. On the northwest corner is property that was originally owned by Dr. John Hole many years ago. And the property here at 1424 Alex Bell is a property that Commissioners acquired shortly after the public meeting that was held. And I'll talk more about that as we go along. But you can see two-lane roads, and it's a four-way stock intersection. So, why, why do we even look at this intersection? Well, one of the, there are two main reasons, crashes and congestion. For crashes, we, the county engineer and the Washington Township trustees commissioned a traffic analysis and safety study for this intersection, hired a consulting engineer, American Structure Point. And they analyzed crashes there. I don't expect everyone to be able to see the diagrams very well, but each one of those collision points is a, intersection points is a, is a collision or a crash. And this intersection is ranked either right at the top or very near the top of all the, all of the locations on the county road system for high crash rate. There were 40 intersect, 40 intersection-related crashes over a three-year period. 60% of those were rear-end crashes. 30% were angle crashes. And I think even perhaps more importantly, 45% of those crashes resulted in injuries. As far as congestion, during the, the peak hours, both in the morning and the afternoon, the backups can extend from 800 feet to 1,000 feet. It can take, take a while to work yourself through the intersection. The daily traffic on both roads are about evenly split. And in traffic engineering language, there's, there's a term called level of service. It's kind of a measure of how well traffic can flow, how well it can move along without delay. Well, it's just like a grading system, it's from A to F. And this, this intersection operates at level service F. And the backups on Mad River to the south can extend past Munger Road, even, even past Yankee Street. So with the results of the traffic analysis and safety study in preliminary engineering, the county engineer decided to hold a public meeting just to present the options, the ideas and alternatives to the, to the public, to the community, and, and see what the reaction was. See, you know, take their comments. We held the meeting and even opened it up for a comment period, a 30-day comment period to the general public afterwards. And the, at the conclusion, after we collected all comments, analyzed those, it will, the, the county engineer selected the roundabout as the best alternative for the intersection. So, let's look at an aerial view of what that project will look like. If you can see the, the proposed roundabout here, and it's, it's a one-lane roundabout. So the, actually, the, the touchdown points or the, you know, the amount of roadway construction needed on each leg is really not very needed on each leg is really not very long, less in fact than it would have needed for a, for a traffic signal construction. But the, what you also see is the property that was acquired by the Commissioners, that red mark, red X through the, through the, through the house, means that the house will be demolished by the, during the project. And, and part of the, of the property itself will be converted to road right-of-way. So, we touched down on Alex Bell, right at the end of the bridge, touched down on Mad River before it gets to the bridge. Both of those bridges were, if you remember, in poor condition and needed, were greatly in need of rehabilitation. So, last, last year, last summer, we replaced the superstructure on the Mad River Bridge. And right now, we're nearing completion on the rehabilitation of the Alex Bell Bridge over Hole Street. And but both of those structures were able to remain two-lane structures, they didn't have to be widened for this project. What is a roundabout, I think most people know, circular intersections, you yield to traffic already in the, already in the roundabout to enter, they operate at about twenty miles an hour. So, and so it's purposely low speed, and no traffic signals required for that. So, one thing we showed at the, at the public meeting, and I think is really striking, is a traffic simulation of the existing four-way stop as compared to the operation of a roundabout. Whenever I bring this up, people say, well, that, that looks like a bunch of ants moving around. Well, I know it's, it's kind of a small scale, but in the existing condition simulation, this is for the afternoon peak rush hour, the, you can see backups on every leg of the intersection for quite some distance. And that's based on current traffic, even projecting out twenty-five years for a higher traffic volume. Let me see if I can get that back. There, you can see it handles even a greater volume with no backup at all. This is, it's amazing, the same, this has a greater volume of traffic entering the intersection than existing. And, and just a picture of, whoops, now we don't need the sound, just a little picture of what roundabouts kind of look like in general. And I'm gonna fast forward here to just show that roundabouts can also handle school buses, and they can handle emergency vehicles as well as large trucks. And we, we have neighboring counties that have quite a few roundabouts already in operation. This is one in Butler County, just to show how it looks and operates. So, advantages of a roundabout. Well, studies of, studies of roundabouts that have been in operation for quite some time have shown a thirty-five percent reduction in crashes, but a seventy-six percent reduction in injuries, which is, it's a huge reduction. It operates more efficiently. This, this proposed roundabout will operate at level of service A, which is the best. And it's even better in off-peak hours, which, so drivers approaching the intersection rarely have to stop. Fewer stops and starts means less idling, less pollution, and they're quieter, really, because there are fewer stops and starts. So, we will, we've already committed to putting on an information campaign through press releases, news media, website, and so on, to educate drivers on how to drive a roundabout when we get closer to the project construction. This will be the first roundabout on the county road system in Montgomery County, but like I said, there are many around the state, more than two hundred around the state of Ohio. Butler County has more than twenty currently, and Warren County has eight. So, it's really, it's not, not that unique. And just, then to move on to what the individual properties here within the project, the, the green shaded area, this is at the northeast corner of the intersection, Eric Smith's property. So, we will need a permanent easement along Mad River on his property, plus a temporary easement that's shaded in blue, because by expanding the, kind of the radius around the intersection, means we'll be moving, building an embankment to hold that up, hold up the edge of the road. And so, we'll be getting into the side, side of his property, side yard. And I'll make it show it better on the next slide. This DPNL pole, electric lines, overhead lines, will, will have to shift about twenty feet to the east in order to keep, to allow room for the new, new pavement, which is another reason for acquiring the easement on the property. So, the new pole will be about right here, and then the electric lines will go to this pole, which means that, that will mean some tree removals along the, along his side yard here, and just for electric lines, and also in order to construct the widened slope, widened embankment. And there are a few pine trees right in the front to be removed. We will rebuild his driveway approach at the, at the road, but it won't be any, any steeper than what it is currently. And on the other side of the intersection, here's the county's property. And as I said before, the area shaded in green will be converted to road right-of-way. As you can see, the part of the roundabout is, quite a bit of the roundabout is actually on that property, and there'll be a drainage swale behind the curving. So, the house will need to be demolished, and will be done as part of the construction contract. Very small temporary easement here is needed from Mr. Bromland to, to rebuild about twenty feet of his driveway approach. And that shows it from above. The project itself, construction cost estimated at nine hundred and ninety million. I'm sorry, nine hundred and ninety? I was counting.
That's one heck of a roundabout. He was just seeing if we were paying attention.
I shocked myself. Nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, a little less than a million. The design costs are two hundred and fifty-six thousand, so just about a quarter of construction. Right-of-way costs haven't been determined yet, because we, we always get independent real estate appraisals performed, so I hate to quote a figure for that right now. But after the public meeting was, was concluded, and after, after come to a decision on which one was the best alternative, then the county engineer applied for federal safety funds for this project, and presented that, presented that application to ODOT, and they, they liked it. There, so we will have a federal grant to cover ninety percent of design and construction cost, plus seventy percent of right-of-way cost. And we've also applied for two hundred thousand dollars of Ohio Public Works Commission funding. If approved, then that would pick up a very large part of the local share of the cost. As far as schedule, once approved by the Commissioners, we'll go forward with the real estate appraisals and then acquire the easements needed. Anticipate that in, in fall and some over the winter of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, will, there'll be some tree clearing, and that'll give a chance for DPNL to move their, their electric lines before road construction begins. And then tentatively, road construction could begin May of twenty twenty-two, and should last three to four months. And unfortunately, the intersection itself will have to be closed on all legs through construction, because there really is no way to maintain any traffic while you're constructing a roundabout. So, we'll have to have a, I don't know if you can see the detour routes very well, the Munger, Whip to forty-eight, back on Alex Bell, McEwen, seven twenty-five. These are, these are detours that I think people have become, become pretty accustomed to with, with the amount of bridge construction we've had going on in that area. And before, before we quit, just a shout-out to Dr. John Hole. This is, this is really an interesting area, that Dr. John Hole was the first doctor to locate in this area, and I think he came to Montgomery County, or well, what's now Montgomery County, came to this area in seventeen ninety-six. And he and Daniel Cooper and another person, another man, actually established Mad River Road from Cincinnati area, what's become Cincinnati, up to, into Dayton at the mouth of the Mad River, which is obviously how it became to be known as Mad River Road. Thirty, thirty-eight point seven five miles, which he, he established and surveyed, and, and only five miles of that road remains now in use, which is the five miles from David to seven twenty-five. So, now Dr. Hole, he bought four hundred and forty acres there at the intersection. On the, on the north, that'd be the northwest side, see where the pond currently is and the windmill. And, and these are spring houses that he built and are still standing, in fact, they're still in operation. The current owner of the property uses these, pumps water from those spring houses to fill his pond. So, they, they can still be seen from the road. And of course, you know, my grandson went to Dr. John Hole Elementary School. He didn't found it, but it was named after him.
I did my student teaching there.
Oh, you did, oh. And I think there's, there's a gravestone that is at the school, to commemorate Dr. Hole, that's not very.
Interesting.
Why, it's an interesting history for this area. And with that, that's all the presentation I have.
You answered my, my biggest question, I think, is that looking forward into the future, is, are we building it big enough, or, you know? Because quite honestly, that, while it's not a roundabout outdone by Austin Landing and all of that, you know, it seemed to outgrow it quickly, the traffic.
Well, one, one thing about this location is the, the destinations at either ends of these roads are pretty well-developed out already. So, you've got, for Mad River, you have the city of Kettering at the north end, and Dayton Mall area at the south end, and then Alex Bell, you have Centerville to the east, and West Carrollton Marine to the west. So, there, it's, it, there's not gonna be a tremendous increase in traffic, but we have factored in what traffic increase we anticipate.
For the roundabout.
Well, that was my biggest question, because I just thought that one was like, oh, man, we've already, you know, not this project, but, so that's good.
You know, you stated that you've had several meetings with some of the residents around there, what, have they been, you know, pleased? Are they gonna be coming down to the Commission complaining? Are they, they're happy about this?
Happy may not be the correct word.
Okay, all right.
I think, but acquiesce may, may be a word, they, they've seen it coming for several years now, and of course, they, they will be compensated appropriately for the property we're taking. So, and the biggest one, the biggest one, we already, we already purchased several years ago in the name of the Commissioners, and they were, they were willing sellers, so.
Okay. But imagine no one's looking forward to the time when you can't, when you have to do only the detours, but then once it's done, they'll be happier.
Yeah, especially my wife.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I remember that intersection very well, John and I would, it's where you had to go to get anywhere, and you know, he had a wreck down there, somebody hit him several years ago, I think he told you about that, Paul.
He did.
Yeah, awful. I'm glad, it's, it's definitely needed. Okay, I guess next week, I guess we
Will.
Have the official hearing.
We'll have the hearing, we'll have an opportunity for the public to
Right.
Participate like we've done before with hearings, and they'll be able to ask questions and give us comments live.
Okay, good.
Information on how to do that will be, will be advertised.
Okay.
Or has been advertised, actually.
Okay, are we done?
Do we have to move to adjourn or any of that?
No.
Okay.
No, I didn't think so, Emily, we don't have to, do we? Because we already moved to adjourn the regular meeting, this was just a viewing.
Right.
I remember years ago, I don't know who else remembers this, we used to go out, the viewing, you would go out to see the location.
Right.
Yeah, I remember those days, yeah.
I drove Commissioners out to that at several occasions.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, all right, everybody, see you later.
Thanks.
Have a good one. This is the end of our days. Next, tomorrow's gonna be cool, so enjoy this afternoon.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.